You had it facing the wrong way?
No, I had it, uh, I have a little block there.
And, uh, calling the meeting to order and ask Ms. Glenn, uh, to take her over.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to call the role for the, uh, commission meeting being held on Monday, July 13th. Um, I'm sorry, the Winston-Salem Public County Utilities Commission Meeting. Um, Chairman, Chairman Randall Tuttle.
Is here.
Commissioner and Vice Chair Wesley Curtis.
I am present.
Commissioner Howard Day.
Present.
Commissioner Tom Griffin. He was there.
Take your, um.
Present.
There.
Tom Griffin.
Present.
Commissioner Yvonne Hines. Commissioner Yvonne Hines, is she in?
I don't see her, Patrice.
I don't see her on here.
Okay, Commissioner Hugh Dernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Duane Long.
Here.
Commissioner Chris Parker.
Present.
Commissioner Donald Stewart.
Present.
Commissioner Alan Younger.
I'm here as well.
Thank you, Ms. Glenn. Uh, before turning it over to Courtney, I want to congratulate Mr. Long on completing the first of a five-year term and being appointed again. So, Duane, looking forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you very much.
And Courtney, take it away.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, commission members. Um, before we get started, I just want to announce uh, from our staff and any guests who's on the call. So, you have myself, Courtney Driver, Utilities Director, Mike Corvisto, who's the Deputy Utilities Director, Jan McCarg, Assistant Director, Michael Stover, Assistant Director, Trice Glenn, Recording Secretary, Shang Chu Huffman, Capital Projects Engineer, Todd Lewis, Plan Review Engineer. We have Kyra Boyd, Boyd Gail Ketteler, and Larry Bell with our Communications Team, Lisa Saunders, our CFO, Jerry Bates, Purchasing Director, Angela Carmen, the City Attorney, Marilena Jensen-Goethold, Assistant City Attorney, Joanna Allen with Finance, Kirk Beurling with Real Estate, Jakira Westbrook, Office of Inclusion and Advancement. And I think that's all city staff, um, that's on the call. And we also have Kent Lackey with Black and Beach. Okay, if I missed your, your name, please let me know. A couple announcements before we dive into the PowerPoint. First, I wanted to announce that, um, Lisa Saunders has announced her retirement. And, um, hate to put her on the spot like that. That was announced last Friday, but she will be retiring at the end of this year. And, um, we've got some really big shoes to fill. Lisa has done a lot for, for the city of Winston-Salem and for our utility, um, getting us into a good financial position where we're at right now. And, and actually has been really helpful. The, the financial position that we're in now has been helpful to, to face this pandemic and, you know, not being able to cut people off for, for non-payment and everything like that. She's really put us in a, in a good position to weather that storm. But anyway, I did want to, um, just tell Lisa that we appreciate everything she's done and we, we are sad to see her go, but also excited for her as well.
Thank you, Courtney. I turned my video on just to say, hey, thanks. I appreciate it and enjoyed working with everybody and, um, especially the members of the commission. Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. Um, so we got her for a few more months, but not much longer. Um, a couple of things. The, the Governor's Executive Order 124 and 142, you're aware of. That was the executive order to suspend disconnects due to non-payment of water accounts. It is set to expire July 20, 29th. We, the word that we're getting is that it, the Governor will not extend that executive order, but if you remember correctly, we actually, um, suspended disconnects before the executive order back on March 13th. So, we, we did that prior to the Governor's order. And so, I don't have any answers for you today, but I have been talking to Greensboro, Charlotte, and Raleigh about, just because the Governor doesn't extend that executive order, what does that mean for us at a local level? Um, you know, politically and locally, are we going to be able to just automatically jump back into cutting people off for non-payment? Are we going to have a transition plan? What's that going to look like? So, just to let you know that I am working through that and I'm working with the other large utilities to see what, what they're planning on doing and, and hopefully we can, we'll figure something out and I will, I'll keep you informed on what that looks like. Any questions about that? Okay. The, the issue, the main issue is the pandemic is not going away. So, there'll still be people that will be, will be struggling to pay their bills. The other thing I wanted to update you on is that we've been approached, um, by two, uh, people regarding a roundup program. And it's basically similar to what you would see when you go to a grocery store and they, or with your bank and they say, do you want to round up to the nearest dollar? And that money gets set aside to go to some, um, charity or some, um, something special. So, this program that we've been approached, one person approached us about a roundup program to help people pay for their bills now that are struggling to pay their water and sewer bills. Um, the other option was to, um, have the program to help pay for affordable housing. So, we're, we're looking at options. We're looking at what other utilities are doing in North Carolina. There's a few other utilities that have, uh, that type of program. But what we do know is that of the utilities that have such a program, they're using a nonprofit to administer it. The utility's not actually administering it. And it doesn't really generate that much revenue. We also know that the ones that have that program, they're using it specifically for, um, to help people pay their utility bills, not necessarily to use for anything else, such as affordable housing or anything like that. So, those are a couple of items that have come up that we're looking into. I just want to make sure that you're aware of, of those requests and, and what's going on. Any questions about that? Okay. With that, I am going to share my screen and we'll go ahead and start the slideshow. Okay, everybody can see that?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. So, we've got, uh, the water and wastewater updates. We'll go over our financials, uh, the solid waste update. We'll present the agenda items. Then we'll go over our CIP updates and, um, end with the, our priorities at the end. So, Mike Stover will, will present first.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, welcome to the July commission meeting. We'll start with the conveyance dashboard. For the calendar year of 2020, we've had 22 conveyance permits issued for a value of a little over $2 million. And the, the miles chart shows the, the breakout between, uh, miles of water versus miles of sewer. So, we've had almost 4.9 miles of, uh, water mains permitted versus 3.8 miles of sewer permitted. Here's the, uh, rainfall data for the month of June. As you can tell, we didn't have much rain for the month of June compared to last year, but, uh, through this, through the calendar year so far, we're a little ahead where we were last year. And the entire state, nobody's in the, in drought conditions quite yet. For the month of May, uh, we're up 2.7% over, uh, May of 2019. We produced 37.9 million gallons a day. And then fiscal year-to-date water production, we're neck and neck where we were, um, in 2018, 2019, and slightly above our five-year average. Here's our water quality sampling information. Uh, we took 26,000 samples at our three water plants for the month of June and filled in 53 water quality calls, and we didn't report any violations, uh, any of our plants. Here's our collection system update. Uh, you will notice for the month of March, uh, you see NOD versus NOV. An NOD is a Notice of Deficiency. It's the first time, uh, over the past year, actually the past year and a half, that, um, we received an NOD. From a hierarchy standpoint, the state has, uh, like four different action levels. They have, uh, no action or, or no further action. They have a Notice of Deficiency. They have a Notice of Violation. And then they have an intended enforcement. You're going to get a civil penalty. So, the NOD is one step above a, a no further action. We got four of those in March and, uh, one, uh, Notice of Intended Enforcement. Uh, the intended enforcement was on a, uh, fairly large spill during a, a heavy weathered vent at the Muddy Creek Plant. The four NODs, uh, were very, very minimal. Uh, one was, uh, one gallon reaching surface waters. And I think the other three, uh, I think the highest one was 17 gallons, uh, meeting surface waters. We've contacted the state to try to get a better understanding of what the criteria is for each one of those action levels. And they really won't tell us, um, that criteria because they don't want you to, you know, maybe misreport anything so you get a lower action. Um, but, you know, for the month of February and January, we've had spills with way more than 17 gallons that came back with no action required. So, we're trying to understand that. Um, there's just no consistency from month to month. And then for the month of April, May, and June, we haven't received those reports yet. Here is, uh, the good news of the day. Uh, as you can tell, we finished the year lowest SSO count on record. Um, a little over four SSOs per 100 miles. If you look at this chart, so zero to two, our goal is two SSOs per, per 100 miles. That, uh, bottom tier, zero to two, would be a high-performing, or not high-performing, best-in-class utility. From two to four SSOs per 100 miles, a very high-performing utility, which we're right there at it. And then above a four is, uh, in a utility that needs, uh, some improvement. So, we're making great strides through the CSIP program to, to reduce our SSOs, uh, in our system.
Yeah, I just want to echo what Michael said. I mean, this is our lowest year on record, right above four. And so, you can see our, the CSIP program is working. This is, this is really, really good and telling that, that we finished the year with, um, with as low SSOs as, as we did.
Especially considering the, you know, the pandemic we're in. People flushing things they shouldn't be flushing. Staffing shortages. We've had, uh, you know, our operation staffs working staggered shifts for a couple of months now. They're, they're back to normal shifts now. Um, but we've had staffing shortages in-house. We've had staffing shortages on our contractor, cleaning crews. Uh, so the fact that we were able to come in where we did this year with all those challenges is truly remarkable. Here's our, uh, SSO count by month. So, uh, we had, let me move my screen, seven for the month of, uh, June, which is about where our five-year average is. One of those SSOs was, uh, related to vandalism. Somebody decided to pop a manhole lid and shove a, uh, car cover, um, and a pair of work boots inside, which caused an SSO. Then we had two pipe failures, uh, in actually, um, neighborhoods that we are doing rehab products on now. Um, and then we had four, uh, fall roots and debris-related SSOs. Here's our cleaning group.
Can I say something here?
Sure.
I just wanted to say that I, that's a wonderful thing to see a plan finally kind of work. I guess, we've been, uh, all these years that I've, I guess, have been on the board, it's been one of the things that's always a big nut to try to tackle. And a plan was put in place and sure enough, the plan is working. I mean, and that's, that's a good thing, especially when it comes to trying to run into situations where we have some, some violations that people can see that we're, well, we're putting things in place to, to try to, to try to minimize that and that plan is working. So, I mean, that's a great record. I just couldn't, I couldn't stay muted without at least saying that. Thanks.
Well, thank you. And the, the other thing that, you know, you don't necessarily see, the, the SSOs that we're getting from most part, a lot of those are very small volume. They still count. If one gallon reaches surface waters, it counts as, you know, if it was 100 gallons, but the volumes are going down as well. This, uh, graph is the cleaning production graph. Uh, as I've been saying for several months, we're well in advance of our 10% permit requirement. And we're slightly, we're closing the year slightly below our 23% scheduled cleaning requ, uh, goal, not a requirement goal. Um, but if you, if you look between our contractors, our cleaning contractors and our in-house crews, we cleaned 393 miles of our collection system this year, uh, which is quite impressive. One of your items on the agenda is for a change order for Black and Beach for Extended Construction Administration Services. So, I'm going to go ahead and give you an update on the Muddy Creek project, uh, prior to Mike Corvisto briefing the items. Um, most of you all are very familiar with where we stand on this project. Uh, we're over two years behind schedule. The latest completion, estimated completion date, uh, is October of this year, which, um, still is probably a little too soon. We do have some fairly good news. As of last week, uh, MWH has introduced wastewater to the headworks and they, they're going through, uh, startup and testing. They're checking out their equipment. But there is wastewater going through the, the headworks and it is working, last I heard on Friday. Um, as of today, July 13th, we are currently holding $4.794 million in liquidated damages. So, um, $4,000 a day up until substantial completion. And then, uh, after substantial and before final completion, it goes down to $1,500 a day. Any questions on that right now? I got a couple of other slides. This is a picture of our storm equalization basins with, uh, you see the water shooting. These are our water cannons. There's three of those basins, by the way. And then this is just a timeline of, uh, kind of the Muddy Creek project in particular. So, back in March of 2013, um, the commission approved an engineering agreement for design services for the South Fork Critical Improvement Program for a little over $7 million. Um, September of 2014, you all approved an engineering agreement for Construction Administration Services for $7.6 million. And then over the last couple of years, we've had, uh, two amendments, one for $2.4 million in September of 2017 for extended CA services. And then we took another amendment last July for a little over $1 million for extended CA services. And we're at a point now where the amendment two was supposed to run through March. We extended that out until July and we're out of funds. And we've, we're obligated to, you know, finish this program and we need some additional services for Black and Beach to see that through. So, we need an amendment number three, uh, to finish out the South Fork program for $1.1 million. That should finish out the Muddy Creek project and you'll see on the next slide, the Kerners Mill Lift Station project. So, here's the program schedule. Uh, as I said, we've introduced flow to the headwork. So, this is July 2020. They will start the 30-day operations test. Um, right now, August of 2020, they're, uh, projecting to have substantial completion. So, after they achieve that, LDs will drop from $4,000 to $1,500 a day. And then October, um, they're, they're saying they're going to be finally complete. I got maybe one more slide and then I'm going to turn it over to Kent Lackey for questions. Um, this is just, uh, an update on the total program cost. So, years ago, I think in 2013 maybe, and maybe even a little earlier, uh, the commission appropriated $123.4 million towards the South Fork program. That was to design and construct nine critically improved, uh, important projects that came out of the master plan. Uh, the Muddy Creek Headworks was one of those projects. You can see, um, the, the final numbers. All of these projects except the Muddy Creek Project and the Kerners Mill Pump Station Project are complete. The Kerners Mill Pump Station, uh, project started maybe four, five, six months ago, and it should be complete this year. Uh, not this year, sorry, March of next year. And, uh, we anticipate the Muddy Creek project to be done this fall. Any questions on that? I know that was a lot to digest at one time.
I've got a question. On this, uh, million dollars from Black and Beach, is it going to come out as we're holding money? We're holding on the contractor now.
So, the liquidated damages are meant to recoup, um, actual costs from, for the utility. So, if you look at, if you sum up those three amendments, they're a little more than $4.5 million. And so far, I think, uh, the liquidated damages are about $4.7, $4.8 million. So, that tells us that we, we set those liquidated damages amounts appropriately. They are meant to recoup money that we're paying to Black and Beach. Uh, in addition to all of this, uh, as many y'all know, we've received, I think, 15 formal claims, um, totaling over $10 million. And there's an additional seven potential claims that they've not submitted, but we anticipate they're going to submit for another $7 million. So, once the, we're trying to get the project done and get the facility in service. And then Courtney and I, we, we have several months, if not years, of, uh, legal battles to close this thing out.
Uh, Mike, if I, this is Chris. If I could ask the question, you've got, um, the amount you said to Black and Beach, what about attorney's fees?
The attorney's fees, I've got it captured up under Project One. Uh, the, the PO amount between, um, our outside consultant and then if you remember, we hired a, a fellow named Tim Fitzgerald for some scheduling review, total about $438,000 uh, to date. Those are, those are PO amounts. That is not what has actually been billed yet.
Hey, I'm Mike. Uh, similar vein on this slide at the bottom. Excuse me, we show a negative or, uh, savings so far, $6.4 million. Uh, what's our projected at the end of the day, uh, variance to budget?
Um, the, the, the big variable is the Muddy Creek Project. The Kerners Mill Pump Station Project is on schedule, on budget. Uh, Shang, tell me if I'm wrong about that. And that leaves the Muddy Creek Project. Uh, Courtney, if you want to chime in, the unknown is how the, all these claims get sorted out.
Yeah, I would agree. The claims, obviously, we, we don't find a lot of merit in their claims. They've had the claims for quite some time. And, and we went through a process of looking at the merit of each one of those along with, um, the engineer. And so, according to us, what we spend is what we think is appropriate. But we know when we get, you know, we'll, we'll have to get into litigation and, and settlement discussions.
But other than, yeah, so, but, but that 6.392 is that, like, I understand the claims and the liquidated damages are, two sides of a scale that need to be worked out. But how much more do we plan to spend in normal course of business to finish the project?
What you see here at $117 million is what we, we feel pretty comfortable that that's what we would, normal course of business, that's what we would spend. And we feel as confident as we ever have with the project being finished with the new estimated completion date. Hopefully by the end of the year. I mean, before, in the past, we've said, you know, we've had these dates. We didn't feel comfortable about them, but that's what the contractor gave us. At this point, when they're, you know, doing startups, we feel like they will be finished by the end of the year.
Cool, thanks.
We also have Kent Lackey on the phone from Black and Beach to answer any detailed technical questions. If, if anybody else has a question about this project. Okay?
Okay. Um, before I turn it over to Mike Corvisto, I think, then Ms. Hines joined.
I did.
Okay. So, just wanted to get that on the, the record that Commissioner Hines joined. Thank you. Okay. Um, Mike, are you ready?
I'm going to say yes. Okay. Um, good afternoon, everyone. Just wanted to give you an update on where we stand on our revenues for FY '20, the fiscal year that we just completed on June 30th. Uh, as you can see, we're anticipating coming in right at the $115.1 million. Our, our revenues did drop off in May and June below the projected budget as anticipated. So, we're coming in right on where we, where, when we, when we redid our estimate, we're going to, we think we're going to end up right on that number, the $115.1. Um, wanted to talk about the, uh, executive orders, 124 and 142. Courtney hit on this a little earlier. The executive order 142 has extended things out, uh, for, until, uh, July 29th. And after that time, based on these executive orders, we will have to, uh, provide at least six-month payment plans for customers who need them at the date of expiration. And we'll be working with our staff and reaching out to local nonprofits to, to determine how to best navigate the collection of these delinquent accounts and see if we can find some additional funding for some of our customers that have been hit by the COVID-19 pandemic, uh, financially. And from, from the utility standpoint, the impact of, uh, executive orders 124 and 142, we waived just under $1 million in late fees and penalties, uh, since April 1st. And currently have over 13,000 past due accounts in a total of $3.1 million in past due billings, which is, uh, compared to about 2.2 at the same time last fiscal year. So, we're going to continue to monitor, monitor that and see how, how things progress into the new fiscal year and, as Courtney mentioned, uh, determine when, um, it's going to be feasible for us to start reaching back out to customers to collect, uh, from a local standpoint and how we want to, uh, message that and, and whether we will, what, when and how we may reinstitute, uh, cutoffs for non-payment, et cetera. Any questions about any of that?
Okay.
Uh, if there are no questions, I'll turn it over to Jan for the solid waste update.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Appreciate that. Good afternoon, everyone. The, we ended the fiscal year at the end of June and at Haynesville Road Landfill, we totaled, the, the total waste stream was 268,752 tons. So, we were about 1,000 tons below last year's total, but ahead of the budget. And in June, we took in 23,760 tons. So, we saw an increase over those low months of April and May that we had talked about. Some of that, we should note, came from Old Salisbury Road Landfill, which was closed for the, until June 15th. So, for about half of the month, Old Salisbury Road was closed. Which resulted in lower tonnage at that landfill during the month of June. But we still ended the year at 49,122 tons. So, we were ahead of the previous year and ahead of the budget at Old Salisbury Road. As a matter of fact, it was a record year. We hadn't seen that level of tonnage since 2009. As a matter of fact, it was a record year. We hadn't seen that level of tonnage since 2009 at, at that site. So we talk a lot about tonnage, but these are the revenue numbers that those tonnage numbers equate to. At Haynes landfill, we took in over $9 million, which was about 8% ahead of the budget for that facility. At Old Salisbury, we took in just over 1.6 million, which is almost 15% ahead of that budget. And at the yard waste sites, we saw a decrease, or we came in below the budget by about 11%. And that is largely due to a couple of things. We, we have talked over the last couple of months about sanitation having to change its routing and its collection schedules. So that resulted in a decrease in revenue. And we also budgeted slightly higher this year because we've seen an increase in this waste stream over the past few years. So total revenues were $11,649,691, which is about 7% ahead of the budget.
Jan, this is Chris, if I could ask a question. If I could ask a question, I saw where they discontinued bulky, bulky item pickup for the year. What kind of impact do you project?
We do, we will see an impact at Haynesville Road landfill from that, just like we did in, they suspended it also in April, I think it was. So there's some revenue that's going to be lost from that. But I think the biggest impact will be an increase in the smaller vehicles coming in, the flat-rate vehicles, as we call them. When people are self-hauling their waste instead of having it picked up by the city, we'll see an increase. So we should, we may have traffic impacts, especially on Saturdays. We're seeing a lot of traffic, which we've talked about a little bit in the past. We're aware of that, and we plan to bring in extra staff if we possibly can. There's not a lot we can do to prepare, but we certainly are going to be vigilant about trying to do everything we can to be ready for that influx of traffic.
Harold Day here. Are we, have we started charging for the small pickups and trailers coming into landfill now? Are they starting to have to pay?
We did start, that was actually the beginning of June. We did start charging at the yard waste sites for all those, all those trips.
Okay.
Sure did. So yeah, there's nothing that's being given away at no cost, so to speak, at this point.
Jan?
Are there other questions? Yes.
Besides?
Jan?
Yes?
How long are you running the two-free load policy?
That is a permanent fixture. We, every year, city residents are eligible for two free passes with certain vehicle size restrictions. But city residents are eligible for those free passes every year.
Now, what are the restrictions?
The, the free visits are limited to what we call a flat-rate trip, which is a pickup, pickup truck up to halftime in size, minivans, SUVs, cars, those sorts of lighter cargo vehicles.
Okay, okay. I was in that line Saturday.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that. Saturdays do get extremely busy.
Absolutely.
Hey, Jan?
Yes?
Yeah, what about the hazardous waste center over on MLK? Activity there?
It, it has reopened, and they've implemented some different procedures so that they can facilitate social distancing and, and people have to unload their own materials. But it's been, it's been working out fine.
Okay.
Okay, any, any other questions for Jan? Well, Jan, I'm sorry, you got one more slide, so they may have some more.
Yeah, that's fine. We thought we would just go ahead and mention the agenda item that relates to solid waste while, while I'm speaking. We did issue a request for qualifications this spring for solid waste engineering services. Excuse me. And we got 10 responses to that. We ranked them, evaluated them and ranked them according to our internal processes. And we are requesting approval for six of the 10 firms that responded to the RFP. The first four that you see on the list there are names you've seen before, HDR Engineering, Goldr Associates, SCS Engineers, and Jeremy O'Brien. So they have all worked for us for, for years, actually. And then there's a new name, Draper Aiden, which is a firm that has a good history with solid waste as well as just general civil work. Lobella Associates is a name that you may not have seen before, but they were previously known as Joyce Engineering, and they also have worked for us for, for several years. So the annual fee amounts are listed in the item, but those are budget estimates, and the actual work will be done on a time and materials basis with, with not to exceed top values. Any questions about that item that I can answer?
Well, I appreciate all the work y'all put into that because that is a really difficult thing to do, especially when you're talking about engineering firms and maybe looking at the requests for proposals and having some of those for engineering firms that's worked on something for a long time and how much time and effort it would take to bring somebody up to speed. So I do appreciate the work that's been done on that. Thank you.
Sure thing. Yes, we, we think continuity is important. So we do, we did award some work to the same firms that had been doing it. But it's also important to use new firms and see the capabilities that they have. And sometimes you can learn something from a new company coming in. I think that's everything I have, unless there's other questions about that.
Okay, thank you, Jan.
Sure.
Okay, so now Mike with us, though, will go over the agenda items.
Okay, thank you, Courtney. Item two is consideration of a resolution authorizing execution of various agreements regarding proposed water and/or sanitary sewer improvements to be installed within various developments. This month, we have five developer agreements with a total of $222,980 for water and $227,550 for sewer. Item three is consideration of a resolution requesting that the city council of the city of Winston-Salem authorize the sale of fee simple right-of-way related to the North Carolina Department of Transportation Northern Beltway project. NCDOT is in the process of constructing the Winston-Salem Northern Beltway and is in need of obtaining right-of-way for a lot on Germanton Road. NCDOT has offered the appraised value of $1,750 for the hundredth of an acre lot, which was purchased for $600 in 2001, and staff is supportive of this request. Item four is consideration of a resolution authorizing easement acquisition by donation for the Idles Road Regional Lift Station project. On January 8th, 2018, the Utility Commission approved a three-party agreement between Forsyth County, the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners, the Davie County Board of Commissioners, and the Utility Commission with the terms of the Idles Road Lift Station project. One term of the agreement was that Forsyth County would donate to the Utility Commission the necessary permanent easements for the lift station project. And it's necessary that the city of Winston-Salem acquire the 48,288 square foot permanent access and utility easement for the Idles Road Regional Lift Station project. The property owner of Forsyth County will donate the needed easement. Staff recommends approval. Item five is consideration of a resolution awarding a contract for water meter testing and repair. The Meter Services Division needs the vendor to annually test and/or repair approximately 33-inch and larger water meters related to customer or Winston-Salem Forsyth County utilities concerned and to perform inspection and/or replacement of approximately 250 residential water meters and/or meter interface units annually. A request for proposals for this work was issued. Two responses were received and evaluated by a panel of city staff members. Based upon the evaluation panel's assessment, it is recommended that a contract for water meter testing and repair and estimated annual amount of $100,000 be awarded to Florida Line. The, the terms of the RFP reserve the right to extend the service contract for as many as two additional 12-month periods if both parties agree and funds are made available for that purpose for potential, a potential total estimated contract value of $300,000, and staff recommends approval. Item six is consideration of a resolution awarding a contract for grit hauling services at wastewater treatment facilities. The RFP eligible Muddy Creek wastewater treatment facilities generate 10 to 15 tons of grit per week, which must be collected and hauled away by a contractor. A request for proposals to provide these services was issued on May 8th, 2020. Three proposals were received and evaluated by a panel of city staff. Based on the evaluation panel's assessment, it is recommended that a contract for grit hauling services be awarded to Republic Services, Inc. in the estimated annual amount of $70,000 with the option to extend for two additional years, making the total potential value of the award in the estimated amount of $210,000. Item seven is consideration of a resolution awarding purchase orders for sodium bisulfite. Bids were received June 26th, 2020 for sodium bisulfite to be delivered as needed to the RFP eligible Muddy Creek wastewater treatment facilities. Southern Ionics was the low bidder for sodium bisulfite at the eligible plant in the amount of $75,000. And JCI Jones Chemicals was the low bidder for the Muddy Creek plant in the amount of $37,000. These amounts represent an anticipated $2,450 increase in the chemical costs for wastewater treatment for FY '21. Each contract can be extended for two years, making the total estimated award to Southern Ionics, Inc., $225,000, and the total estimated award to JCI Jones Chemicals, $111,000. Staff recommends approval. Item eight is consideration of a resolution authorizing the execution of a utility agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for utility work related to the construction of the Northern Beltway from NC 66 to US 311. NCDOT has prepared and adopted plans to construct the Northern Beltway from NC 66 to US 311. As a result of this project, relocation of water and sewer lines is necessary. Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities is responsible for costs related to relocating water and sewer infrastructure within NCDOT's right-of-way, where NCDOT has prior rights, meaning that they had their right-of-way secured prior to the installation of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities' original infrastructure. NCDOT awarded a design-build contract to Flatiron Constructors, Inc. for this project. Hydrostructures will inspect the construction work as it is performed on behalf of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities to ensure that the work is in compliance with City of Winston-Salem standards. The construction work entails the relocation of over 14,000 linear feet of water line larger than eight inches in diameter with additional relocations of smaller-sized water lines and sewer-related work as well. Staff negotiated a cost of $2,64,716 for this work. Upon completion of all utility work, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities will reimburse NCDOT in one final payment. Questions on that item? Okay. Item nine is consideration of a resolution approving an amendment to an engineering agreement with Black and Beach International Company for additional program management and construction administration services associated with the Muddy Creek Consolidated Influent Pumping Station and South Fork Critical Improvements Program. Mr. Stover presented this item earlier. Are there any additional questions at this time? Okay, item 10 is consideration of a resolution approving contracts for professional engineering services for solid waste management. Ms. McCard presented this item earlier. Are there any additional questions regarding this item at, at this time? Okay, and move on to item 11, which is consideration of a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to New Singular Wireless PCS LLC's lease agreement for the Ninth Street Water Tank. On February 11th, 2013, the Utility Commission approved a lease agreement with New Singular Wireless to place cellular equipment on the Ninth Street tank, water tank. New Singular Wireless has subsequently been acquired by and is being managed by AT&amp;T and has retained Black Dot to review existing rent rates on leases in our area. Black Dot has determined that the current rent at this site is above market rates for the area and is therefore unsustainable in the long term. Staff reviewed a request from Black Dot to revise the contract terms when the current agreement ends on April 30th, 2023. Staff and Black Dot negotiated revised terms and will adjust the monthly rent to $2,500 a month, decrease the annual escalation percentage from 3% to 2%, and ensure a rent guarantee of 60 months commencing on May 1st, 2023. Staff recommends approval of an amendment to the lease agreement terms to begin on May 1st, 2023. Questions about that item?
I've got a question. Do we have a, how many antenna count we got for that kind of money? Because they bring your cousins with them on it, and you don't know it.
We have, currently, Mr. Day, we have a number of other cell carriers located on our, on our property or equipment, and they're paying between $1,200 and $2,300. So their current, and the current lease that AT&amp;T has is, is around $3,000 monthly. So based on what their, their inquiry and proposal to us and our negotiation, we felt that moving forward with the $2,500 was, was appropriate beginning on May 1st, 2023.
Well, you need to get a count of how many antennas they got up there. That's the way to make money. The more cousins they bring, the more money they make off theirself and not us. It's, it's a tricky industry because I've got two towers. I know how to do it. So we need.
Go ahead, Mr. Day, sorry.
Well, you know, you need to watch these carriers because, you know, they're, they're paying big money to get on site that their cousins already got rights to, and you don't know when somebody else comes, another company, and the original contractor will sub that tire out or space out to his competitors to make money off of them. So I just think we need to know how many carriers are on that site.
So when you say carriers, so let me, I know you're, you've got a lot of experience with this and know more about it than probably I do. But we do have these carriers, they submit plans to us, and we approve what they put on top of our tower or our tanks.
I understand that. If you go down the highway and look at a cell tower, every one of those racks of antennas on a big tower is another carrier, and everyone who owns the tower is getting more money. And I just think we shouldn't give away a good spot for them and bring their cousins and friends with them. And we don't get anything out of it. It's the only thing I'm saying.
Okay.
I agree with you, Mr. Day, and I believe these lease agreements have the, I'm going to call it as-built information of what we approved for them to put on the tank. So that's agreed to once the agreement's executed. And then anything else that gets added, we have an on-call water tank maintenance agreement with SNME, and they climb the tank and inspect the work. So nothing's getting added to those tanks without our knowledge.
That's the main thing. You know, they just, they grow like mushrooms if you don't watch them.
Right, agreed.
Okay, we'll turn our attention back to the last item, which is item 12, and it's for information only and relays the new three, five, and 10-year interest rates for financing water and sewer specialist assessments. The rates for FY '21 are decreased due to a drop in the federal prime rate from 5.5 to 3.25%.
Mike, if I could ask you a question about the Northern Beltway project?
Yes, that's Parker.
How much have we had to put into this project from the utility side so far?
That's an excellent question. I may yield to Michael Stover or Shang Chu-Hoofman for that, for that information, if they have it.
Mr. Parker, I guess your question's related to the entire Northern Beltway?
Yes.
I don't have that information right off, right in front of me, but we could compile that. The Beltway is broken into several different contracts, and we can go back and look at each project and agree, NCDOT agreement for each one of those sections. each project and agree, NC DOT agreement for each one of those sections and figure out what that amount is.
Yeah, I would just be curious because, I mean, these projects, the NC DOT decides upon, and it doesn't sound like we have much of a say in how much we're going to owe them once they choose the route. Am I wrong on that?
I think you're right.
No, I don't think you're wrong at all. You know, it's going back to what Mr. Fuiste said, the big deal with these projects are prior rights. Who was there first? And out in the county, particularly where the Beltway's going, a lot of these roads were in place before, you know, water lines were installed. And, you know, these intersections are getting replaced with bridges now and we're having to relocate our water. There's not so much sewer out there on this one as there is water. But we can go back and compile that and get it to you for sure.
Yeah, that'd be interesting. Also, I'm not sure how far they're along on this project, but what is the projected cost going forward as well?
Todd might be able to explain that a little better. From my, what I'm thinking right now, the first section between 421 and Reevesville Road has been under construction for a couple of years now and should be wrapping up fairly soon. So we should have an agreement for that. The next section from Reevesville Road to Old Walbertown Road has been awarded and under construction. We can pull that number. And then this agreement is from Old Walbertown Road to University Parkway and that's what we're asking you all to approve. And then I believe the interchange with US 52 is also under construction, so we can find that number. The plan is, from what I understand, it might be years down the road to continue from 52 back to like Louisville area and tie back in the 421. So we won't have any of that quite yet.
Right. So are these, are these in our budget?
Yeah, every, every year our capital budget, we approve or we appropriate money through the NC DOT improvements program for relocations just like this.
Okay. Well, thanks for giving me that information. I'd like to see how that compares to our budget as well.
Okay.
So any other questions? And if not, we would like to discuss the concept of using consent agenda to approve items one. Oh, actually, could you leave that?
Sorry.
Up on the screen? That'd be helpful for everybody to look and see if.
Yeah.
Items one through, I believe, 11 because 12 is not a voting item. So any, any commission members care to pull items one through 11 from a consent agenda motion and discuss those separately? Hearing, go ahead, sorry?
This is Chris. I want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Could you make that if you don't mind? Items one through 11?
Items one through 11, consent agenda second.
All right, we have a motion of second. Was that Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion on the consent agenda motion to approve items one through 11? Hearing none, I believe, Ms. Glenn. We've got to do a roll call vote, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's right, yes.
Okay, and the order on our agenda, Mr. Cudditt, please say yes or no or aye or nay. Mr. Curtis?
Aye.
Mr. Day?
Aye.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
It looked like I'm muted. I'm muted.
Now you're good.
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mr. Stewart? One more time, Mr. Stewart? And Mr. Younger? Oh, there, and Mr. Younger? That motion for the consent agenda passes. If we now look at the, I guess we're going to go back to CIP. Is that right, Courtney?
Yes, we'll go to CIP and then.
All right, Shang.
Yes, and then we'll, our parties, and then we'll do the close session last.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, I'll turn it over to Shang.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Hope you're all doing well. The first project is Idlesale Lift Stations. The lift station itself is almost complete. We approved waterline change or extension change order very recently, I think last week maybe. So that will be the next item that they'll be working on. The chain link fence and the gates have been installed. The pump station site has been graded and the three submersible pumps have been delivered and installed. So here you can see that the site has been graded and you can see the new fence and the bushes that's been planted around. And here are the three submersible pumps that was delivered and they've already been installed as well. So for Kerner-Snell Lift Station, this is a newer project. The notice to proceed was January of this year. We expect substantial completion to be December 15 of this year. All the civil work has been completed. The four-ton crane has been installed. Electrical duct bank has been completed and the submersible pumps have been delivered and haven't been installed yet, but that, they're working on that. So here you can see the installation of the four-ton crane. South Fork 3. So this project, our notice to proceed was November 4th. And if you'll notice, their contract completion date, it's supposed to be May 2nd of 2021. They are very much ahead of schedule. They just, I think last week or the week before, finished the last pipe segment of the 54-inch gravity sewer line. So all that they have left right now is the lateral connections. So this project should be completed, entirely completed by August. So almost a full year ahead of schedule. Here is a picture of them installing the very last pipe segment for the 54-inch line. Here you can see the progress map. It's pretty much all green and just a little bit of just the laterals left. They've also been cleaning up and seeding along the way, so they're very hopeful that it'll be done by August. Roswell Lift Station, this is also a newer project. The notice to proceed was February and should be completed in a year. The new lift station wet wall has been installed and the Eastman and the erosion control measures are, well, the Eastman's partially cleared and the erosion control measures are partially installed as well. So here you can see the precast concrete wet well. The contractor's getting ready to install that. The wet well has been installed now. And this is the progress map. They've started with the installation of the gravity lines. So you can see that in green. And the Roswell Lift Station is at the very top of the map, but there's a little square. Yep. North Mill Creek. So this is also a project we started in February, should be completed by August of next year. They've finished clearing the Eastman and they've installed the erosion control measures. The bypass system is now in operation and they've just started installing pipe. So here, the picture on the left is the bypass system discharging to the upstream South Mill Creek Interceptor Manhole. And the picture on the right is the installation of a 42-inch fiberglass reinforced pipe. So this is their progress map that they just kind of started. So there's not, there's a whole lot of red still, but to the lower left corner, you can see the green and the yellows where they'll be within the next 30 days. Any questions so far? All right. For Muddy Elige Rehab, notice to proceed was in 2018 July, and we are expecting them to be completed by September of this year. So the electrical work and some of the instrumentation and control system work is ongoing. Gravity belt thickener number three has been completed and is in operation at Elige, and they're rebuilding gravity belt thickener number one also for Elige. So here you can see the picture of the upgraded sludge thickener tank in operation at Muddy Creek. And here is the picture of the gravity belt thickener number three also completed and in operation at Elige. Old Salem. So here's the Old Salem progress map. Almost all of the utility work has been completed. There's a little bit of water left to do on Main Street and Brooksdale, which is the red section you can see there, and a little bit of sewer left on West Academy Street, also in red. And that's it. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Shang. Any questions for Shang before we move on to the next thing? Okay. Um, I haven't really updated us on our priorities and updates in a while, probably since February or March, but as far as, usually I update you on upcoming events. But this, this time we don't have any upcoming events because of our pandemic, but we are still working on our outreach programs. So one thing that Kyra and Gail have been working on is no wipes in pipes campaign, and that's been really successful. We actually had a lot of media attention really throughout the pandemic. I would say in April was really, we had a lot and, and so that's been good. The other, you know, outreach, and this is kind of just hot off the press, is our water savvy. This is going to be our AMI logo and our slogan, I guess, will be smart with every drop. But this is what we're going to be showing to everyone when we try to, when we have our outreach and educate our customers as far as our AMI project. So we, the commission approved that in last month in June, so we are moving forward with that project, have the contracts in place and really starting to gear up on that one very soon.
Courtney, this is Alan. I am glad you're talking about outreach and you just mentioned media, which reminded me of something a little earlier when Mike Avista was giving his report. I couldn't get to the mute button soon enough. I ended up just holding on to my comment. I think it is a big deal that almost a million dollars has been waived as far as late fees, and I wonder who knows that? If I was the media, if I'm looking for something good to report instead of something negative report, that would be a big deal.
Right. I think that's an excellent point and Gail and Kyra are both on this, this call and this meeting, so we can have a conversation about how we get, how we put that out there for people to hopefully appreciate what we're, what the utility's doing, but also get them to hopefully pay their bills too, you know, and not rack up a really large payment.
Maybe what I'm thinking is when we have to go back to not waiving late fees and so forth, that we put it in a context and people would, I'm hoping if they're reasonable, appreciate much more that, okay, I need to pay this bill now, but look, the city did waive, the city and county did waive almost a million dollars worth.
Well, and I say, so here's, I do want to be careful is we're not waiving the, we're not waiving their fees or their bills. We're just deferring them. Yeah, yes, we are waiving delayed fees. Yeah, you're right.
He's talking about the late fees.
Yeah, you're right. You're right about that. Yeah. Yes, we are waiving the late fees, which is pretty significant.
We just better be.
I do agree with the comment, the concept, Alan, that you announced that after you've stopped waiving them.
Yeah.
Right? So, and I think it's very well phrased. This is, now that we're having to, you know, not only pay your current bill, pay your past due bill, but feel good about the fact that we have no fees or penalties on the past due part.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we better be careful. I don't pick it, give people the idea they could not pay. It's like having discounts for your water that Courtney knows about.
Right. Right, that was a question in Ask Sam this weekend, or I guess last Friday.
Courtney, this is Chris. If I could ask a question concerning outreach. Do you have any updates on the odor complaints that we were getting from Elige from, I think it was Ms. Kathy Hines? Do you have any updates on that?
I do, and that's actually in my court. I have the report back from, about our odor study in kind of pre and post odor readings that we've done, and I need to send that out to the commission and I just have not done that yet, but I've had it. And so I need to send that out and show you the progress that we've had. I have not had, we have not had, to my knowledge, any other complaints lately and I have not heard from, from Ms. Hines.
But in general, Courtney, in general, just to confirm that this is good news that you've not sent out. It's not bad news that you haven't sent out.
That is correct. Thank you, that, that is correct. It shows that we have significantly lowered the levels of, from our odor readings and the logs that we got for that. Really the construction that we did at the primary clarifiers, where we had that structural issues that really helped out. So you'll see that in the report.
Did we learn anything that we can transfer to the other wastewater plants?
So the other, Muddy Creek, we don't get as many complaints at Muddy Creek just because of where it's located. There is more rural in that area and we don't have as many close neighbors. We get, we might get some, but it really just depends on, you know, the direction of the wind and the process, the temperature during the day. But in general, we just do not get the complaints at the other plant that we do at Elige.
Okay.
I'd like to comment on that no wipes in the pipe campaign. I've had so many people comment on that campaign, only the four P's you flush. I think we've done a good job of telling everybody that because I have a lot of people talking about it. Only flush the four P's.
That's right. They have, they did a really good job. Kyra and Gail did a really good job on that. Any other questions on that? Just since we just wrapped up FY20, I wanted to show you, and I'm not going to read through all of them, but we've talked about them throughout the year. These are the completed key work items that we accomplished this year. And so there were several. These are the key work items that I report to the city manager's office on a monthly basis and we set new ones every year. So I'm working on the new ones for FY21. The one key work item that we're still working on from FY20 is our extension policies. As you remember, we, the feasibility plan went away with the system development fee law, and so we're working on to revise in those extension policies. Fortunately, it hasn't been as much of a priority because we haven't had any assessment projects right now. So we've, we've been able to focus on our, on some other issues that have come up throughout the year that we hadn't originally planned for, but we'll continue to work on that revisions to the extension policy. And I've talked to Mr. Griffin in months past about setting up a planning and policy meeting. We'll have to do that virtually now, but when we get to that point, we will, we'll work with the committee to bring those policy revisions to the full commission. to bring those policy revisions to the full commission. And that's all we had as far as our slides. Are there any other questions? Because next we'll go into, into closed session.
And any other questions from the commission members? And Mr. Curtis, this is a heads up that in a few minutes, I'm going to ask you to read Agenda Item Number Thirteen. Any questions before we go into closed session? Hearing none, Mr. Curtis, may I ask you to make a motion, please? And if Mr. Curtis is tempered.
Okay, here we go.
I'm coming.
I apologize. I usually give a heads up that I'm going to ask him to read this, but, well, I mean, come on.
I know. Okay, you ready? All right, here we go. I move that the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utility Commission go into closed session pursuant to NC North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three, eighteen point one one, A three to consider and give instructions to its attorneys regarding the handling of the following easement acquisition settlement to preserve the attorney-client privilege. City of Winston-Salem versus Historic Bathabra Park Incorporated, twenty CVS four three nine for the North Mill Outfall Rehabilitation Project.
As always, well done. We have a motion. May I have a second, please?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor. Do I have to do a roll call, Patrice?
Angela.
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Curtis, you made the motion. I presume you also vote in favor of your motion.
Aye.
Mr. Day?
Aye.
Mr. Griffin? Mr. Griffin? All right, Ms. Hines?
Aye.
Mr. Jernigan?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mr. Stewart?
Aye.
And Mr. Younger?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. We are now in closed session.